Alright. Everybody ready? Good to go. Alright. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the November 21st, 2024 Design Review Board Meeting. First up is Rokol.
Board Member Malat.
Here.
Member Kim. Here. Vice Chair Rosner.
Here.
Chair Chong.
Here.
And Board Member Doricio is absent.
Thank you. Now is a chance for oral communications from anybody wishing to address the Designer Review Board for any items that are not on this evening's agenda. If you have something that is not on this evening's agenda and wish to address the Designer Review Board, please come forward. Alright, seeing none, we'll go to the Zoom call. If you're on the Zoom, please use the raise hand feature at the bottom of your screen and we'll let you into the room if you have any, if you'd like to address for any items not on this evening's agenda.
Chair Chong, there are no hands raised.
Alright, thank you, and moving right along to staff briefing.
I have nothing this evening.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now, adoption of the minutes from the November 7th Designer Review Board Meeting. Is there any comments on those minutes? Or anybody that would like to move a motion to adopt them?
So moved.
Alright, second?
Second.
All those in favor of adopting the minutes from November 7th?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. And we move to the consent calendar. So there's one item in this evening's consent calendar. Item CC116 Plus Milan, which is an adoption of the resolution for a application. Is there anyone that is here that would like to address from the public or on the Zoom call? Again, please use the raise hand feature at the top of your screen.
Chair Chong, I have a hand raised from Michael Lampfier. I'm going to turn on their audio.
Okay, and if you could, please state your name and address for the record and keep your comments three minutes, please.
Yes, good evening, Board Members. My name is Mike Lampfier. I represent Clifford Ohm, who's the adjacent landowner on this project that he lives at 18 Place Milan. I just wanted to make sure that Board Members had received a further and supplemental response in opposition that we submitted as to why we don't think the resolution should be passed at this time. In particular, we wanted to give Board Member Kim a chance to weigh in on this application. And there, I think there are some extremely important matters that are involved with this application. I think they were raised very succinctly and well said by Board Member Malat at the last hearing in that I think that the approval of this deck, the size, the mass, the height of this deck would really set bad public policy for the town. If we're going to allow these types of elevated 1400 square foot wide decks that have engineered supports below them. I really think that this is something the Board has to consider with all of its members. And I think there's a lot of issues still to be looked into. I think Vice Chair Rosner mentioned at the last hearing that he would like some additional details, some additional information as to the sight lines and as to the relative heights the deck poses between the two properties. I don't think we've had a chance to really look at that. Also, there are no story poles ever placed for the stairwell, six foot wide stairwell descending from the second level of the home on down towards the privacy wall of my client. Without story poles, we really can't get any idea the height of the person coming down from the upper main level, walking down those stairs towards my client's property. So story pole should have been placed for the stairwell. Also, it impacts the partition idea, the condition that was placed at the end, I think it was suggested by Vice Chair Rosner and then approved. But we have really no idea in the resolution, the way that that partition is described. It says six foot and then really nothing else. We don't know if that's to come up from the flooring of the deck or the stairwell. We don't know if that's to come from the railing on up. We don't know if that's going to be sufficient to block people walking down from the second main level of the home off the upper deck down to the lower deck. We have no idea. We also were confused about a large tree that was seemed to be right in the middle of where this ascending stairwell would go. I know the applicant at the last hearing said that he didn't feel the tree would be involved and have to be removed. We differ or beg to differ, we think it would have to be removed. So there just seems to be a lot of issues here and a great impact, I think, on public policy of allowing a deck of this type to be approved. And I really would urge the Board to reconsider with full membership of the Board and perhaps put this off for more investigation and research into this application. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alright, is there any additional public comment on 16 Plus Milan?
Chair Chong, there are no more public comments.
There is one in that. Someone in the audience.
If you could come forward, state your name and address and keep your comments to three minutes, please.
Can you make sure that that mic is on too, Daria? I'm not sure.
I believe it is. Hi, Board. Good to see you guys again. I'm Daria Hosseinian, the owner at 16 Place Milan. I believe that the matter was discussed and deliberated at length at the last meeting and the resolution, you know, to put privacy screening on the stairs and to accommodate their issues with the privacy. We did kind of all come to some understanding on that. Other than that, I, I hope that we can come to a good resolution today. That's it.
Thank you. Any additional comments on this application? Anybody on the Zoom call?
Chair Chong, there are no more hands raised.
Alright, thank you. With that, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the Board. So this is a consent calendar item that you were absent for. And I don't know if it's the three of us were here, so. Okay, so then I'm in the same place. You're in the same place? You're in the same place? Alright, so with that, I think we'll be looking for a motion to approve the one item on the consent calendar, which is the adoption of the resolution.
Make motion or second?
You can make the motion.
Motion to adopt the resolution for 16 Plus Milan.
Alright, I'll second that. And then all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
And abstaining?
Aye, I mean, I'm abstaining.
Alright, so with that, we adopt the resolution for that application and move on to the first item on this evening's agenda, which is the public hearing for, which is PH1 1960 Straits View Drive. I do believe that staff has a presentation to kind of walk us through what we're looking at.
Yes, and you might want to give the public sort of the order of the day. That might be helpful as well. I believe I just sent you an email with that laid out for you, Chair Chong. And then I can start.
Alright, so we're going to begin with the staff presentation, which will be approximately 10 minutes. And then the applicant, Mr. Kefir, will have 10 minutes to present. The Good Hearts will then have 10 minutes to present. Public comment will be limited to three minutes per commenter. Then Mr. Kefir will have a rebuttal for three minutes and the Good Hearts will have a rebuttal for three minutes, at which point we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the Board.
Thank you and good evening, Chair and members of the design board and public. So what you have before you tonight is a little bit different. You're going to be considering two different items related to a fence and a property. So the first consideration would be consideration of a request to amend Resolution 025-2021 to remove an existing Condition 8A for Design Review 2021-075 for the project that's located at 1960 Straits View. The second portion of the decision tonight would be to look at an appeal of the Director of Community Development's decision to find the erected fence at 1960 Straits View in substantial compliance with the approved design. The project is, as you know, located at 1960 Straits View. This is the property outlined in yellow. And the property for the appellant is actually, let me see if I can get this going here. There's this area right in here. So I, it's been a couple of years since we've been here to discuss this project, actually 2021. So in 2021, the property owner at 1960 Straits View submitted a minor design review application to approve exterior modifications and a perimeter fence at 1960 Straits View. Then on October 13th, the Director of Community Development approved the fence and landscape improvements, which is what we are permitted to do. Based on the code, it is a minor design review application. Therefore, it is approved at a staff level. It can also be referred to the DRB, but in this case, we did make that determination. On October 20th, 2021, the owners of the property located at 2311 Spanish Trail Road and 2243 Vestasio East filed a timely appeal of the Director's decision. So we then scheduled a public hearing on November 18th and the DRB considered the design of the proposed perimeter fence and approved the project with additional conditions of approval related to the fence design and the portion of the fence on the eastern boundary line. On December 2nd, 2021, the DRB approved, we brought back a resolution. And on December 2nd, 2021, the DRB approved the design and adopted the Resolution 025-2021. On January 13th, 2022, the applicant submitted plans to construct that fence. The submitted plans showed a fence with a top and middle bar. Staff reviewed the fence and approved the design in error and granted the building permit. So in brief, they submitted a project plan. We, in error, approved that plan and realized that it was an error. So on March 3rd, 2022, staff issued a stop work order after determining that the building permit was issued in error because the design was not consistent with the approved design based on the top and middle bars and the chain link material. The property owner worked with the town and agreed to remove the fence and replace it with a fence that was similar to and in compliance with Condition 8. And Condition 8 further grants the Director the ability to approve compliance of the fence. The Director subsequently determined that a portion of the fence in place today is placed interior to the applicant's property and not on the property line is in compliance with Condition 8 of the resolution. However, there is still an outstanding section of the fence that has not been approved or has not met the condition of Condition A. And therefore, staff has not been able to, as we would say, take final action or stamp the final plans. And we do not have a design of that fence that includes that at this time. So the stop work is still in effect because that condition has not been met. I am not able to give it a final stamp. However, I have found that the perimeter fence does substantially comply with what was the intent of the Board based on the photo that was provided by Chair Chong at the Design Review Meeting. So after discussion with the property owner on September 23rd, 2024, the property owner at Straits View submitted an application to remove Condition A based on the fact that the wood fence is no longer in place and the fence had been now placed or his perimeter fence has now been placed interior to the property line. On October 30th, the Director had a discussion with the property owner at 2311 Straits View and I informed that property owner of the decision that I have found the perimeter fence in compliance with Condition 8. So on November 4th, the property owner at 2311 Straits View filed an appeal of the Community Development Director's decision to find the fence that had been erected and that it is in compliance with the Design Review Approval as conditioned within the resolution. The appeal is found on the grounds that the construction fence is not, they found that it is not in compliance with Condition 8 because it is chain link fence and the posts and bars on the constructed fence are not similar to those that were provided in the photo by the DRB. So I want to be able to focus the discussion tonight and the decisions that are before you tonight. There will be a lot of discussion about other items, but I want to focus your discussion on the fact that you have two decisions before you. I don't know why the question marks there, but decision one, maybe I was thinking it was a question, but decision one is removal of the Condition 8A from Resolution 025-21. You will be looking at whether or not Condition 8 should be removed from that resolution and that the DRB may wish to consider the plain language that is in within Condition 8 to make that decision. The DRB may wish to consider the physical changes that occurred on the site, including the erection of the fence interior to the property line and the removal of the fence, wood fence along the adjacent property line at 2311. The DRB may also wish to consider when they're looking at this removal of the condition is whether or not, to consider the guiding principles of the site plan and architectural review. The second decision is for the Board to either grant or deny the adjacent property owner's appeal regarding the Director's decision to find the perimeter fence in compliance with Condition 8. If the DRB grants the appeal, it overturns the Director's decision to find the perimeter fence is not in compliance with Condition 8. If the DRB denies the appeal, it upholds the Director's decision to find the perimeter fence in compliance. The DRB may also modify the Director's decision with conditions. The, within the resolution, there is an authority granted to the Director within Condition 8 to approve the perimeter fence design. The Director reviewed the photo provided at the November 21st, 21 hearing against, about the constructed fence. In comparing the photo and the constructed fence, the Director found that the material used in the constructed fence is similar. It was never had to be exact because we never had measurements for that fence. I do want to make that clear. We had solely a photo. It's similar to the hog wire and the supporting braces that are placed at an angle similar to the photo. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Are there any questions for staff before we get started?
In the place of question that where the existing wood fence was that, that, that portion, and now there's a, there's a fence there. How far back is the, the current or the erected fence from the property line? Is it feet, inches?
It's, it's at least a foot in, in interior.
Okay. Thank you.
My recollection was we had an architectural fence that was wood posts with hog wire between them. And that was what was approved. Is, is that incorrect?
There is, within that condition, there's an either or. So they can do that or similar to the photograph which, which Board Member Chong had provided for the perimeter piece. This is not for the section that is along the eastern boundary. I'm talking about the perimeter as a whole. There is a section of Condition 8 that, and I believe is in your attachments to your report, but there is a section that talks about or, one, two, or that it has to be similar to the photograph that was provided.
Was, was there to be a different kind of fence then in that section that has had a wood fence?
So the wood, you mean the wood fence along the eastern boundary?
Yes.
There was a fence that was taken out.
Yes.
And there is also his perimeter fence that's now interior to where that other fence was.
By a foot or so.
Yeah. I'm sure that the property owner can give you those exact.
With the existing, the, the prior wooden fence was, was over the property line, right? So it wasn't within the property line. So who took that down and how far over the property line was that?
So I believe that the, the property owner did take that piece of fence down that was on his property.
Okay, and how far over was it from the property line? Do you know?
I, I don't, no.
Okay.
So sorry, maybe just clarify one more time what I think.
But I, the property owner will be here. You can ask him.
Well, maybe Jim, Jim was asking. Condition 8 specified in either or for a design.
Correct.
For the perimeter fence, but 8A was an exception to that design and it was a condition that it had to be in like kind, which is the wood.
In that section.
Section.
Correct. It, it dealt with what they, what you, it will be termed in the resolution as the eastern boundary portion that I think is anywhere from 16 to 90 feet in length.
Then I'd like to bring up, and this is, this is part of what's happening up there. In the interim, the property owner has cleared every piece of.
Let's, we're, we're, yeah, let's. Let's save this for the, for the discussion and here everybody's.
I have a question about that. Is this something that, is this something that is being permitted or is there a permit required?
For, for clearing avenues of the ground.
Trees, brush and everything.
His clearing of his brush, we wouldn't, wouldn't require that. If he is to remove a tree, we would require that. As I want to say, that's not before you tonight.
Understand.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Then what is the height of the fences?
Six feet.
They're all six feet. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Alright, with that, we will move to, pull my turn it back up here. Alright, so starting with 10 minutes for the applicant, you can come forward.
Dear Members of the DRB, I review the documents submitted to the Board by the Good Hearts and is full of mischaracterizations and half-truths that while not germane to this meeting now need to be addressed. The simple reality is we are dealing with a party who simply does not want us to be able to erect a fence on our property. The Good Hearts challenged our initial design, initial approved design that we submit to the town and then appealed the town's decision to the DRB all the way back in 2021. They delivered a lengthy presentation similar to the one attached to this meeting. There they cited sequa, animal migratory patterns, endangered wildflowers. They challenged our survey and all types of other creative arguments. Kathleen Goodheart is indeed a high-powered environmental lawyer and is currently a leading partner and litigator at Cooley, a unique position of power which she has leveraged to kitchen table litigate all aspects of this project, forcing us to incur over $750,000 in expenses to date. In our four years of living in Tiburon as neighbors of the Good Hearts, they have called the police on my son who was autistic twice. They are actively suing me claiming an equitable easement to our property. They sued to prevent the construction of our sports field claiming encroachment on a waterline easement. They lost. They have repeatedly trespass on our property. I have photo evidence. They have repeatedly yelled at my children even after explicit requests to stop from our legal counsel. They've called the fire department complaining about our small, completely legal compost pile we consulted with the town before we embarked on this green soil initiative. They've threatened my workers. They told my Asian American wife to go back for where she came from. They successfully obtained a preliminary injunction directly after your decision, preventing us from erecting the fence for nearly three years, only to abandon the injunction when faced with the prospect of posting a multi-hundred thousand dollar bond to cover our legal fees if their exotic claims ultimately failed. The Good Hearts have continued to attack our family and now even the town in dishonest and aggressive ways. I would ask this body to let the courts settle our unfortunate ongoing legal dispute with the Good Hearts and focus on the issue at hand. The matter before you today is again, one, approval of our completed fence project. And two, given the change of circumstances following your initial ruling in 2021 caused by the Good Hearts' aggressive and ongoing litigation, a removal of the provision requiring us to build along the property lines and match their then existing illegal fence, mind you, eight feet onto our property, which is owned by the Good Hearts. And you guys have to know this, this, this fence also encroaches on the other neighbor's property. You're asking us to match a fence initially that was built illegally on both sides, encroaching on both neighbors' properties. That fence is gone and we're in ongoing litigation to the tune, again, of $750,000. There is no possible way I can put a fence on the property line given, given the situation. We just can't do it, can't do it. So I'm asking you to remove that condition and, and, and push forward, okay? So I've worked very closely with the town and the Director in erecting the fence. Even in the face of the acknowledged mistake, and I appreciate that, we are willing to incur meaningful additional costs to the $200,000 and $30,000 in material labor to change the design of the fence mid-project to achieve the aesthetic the town desired. We matched the hog wire material in Chair Chong's photo and removed the top and center bars for design, replacing them with angular support bars and cables again to match the photograph. For the record, this chain link design existed on our property and we've now removed it. The Good Heart photos highlight the no trespassing signs that we illegally placed on our border. The sign placement was based on the explicit instruction of the Tiburon Police Force in response to one of the many Good Heart trespasses that we reported where they informed us that we needed to erect a fence. We were trying and have clearly marked signage before they could pursue legal action based on California Penal Code Section 602. Given the ongoing litigation, placing the fence along the property line is simply no longer an option. And so we have placed the approved fence according to our accepted survey well within our property line. The optics of close proximity to the remaining Good Heart fence is simply because we haven't removed the posts that still encroach on our property at this point. The compromise, and this is what, the spirit of what I think you guys were doing back in 2021, was to try to create a situation where we would relocate their existing wood post fence to the property line. And we agreed, we were going to do that. But then they went pursue this incredible lawsuit campaign against us that we're still fighting in court today. They rejected your effort. They rejected the fact that it's our property. They rejected the fact that the town had approved this plan. They refused to let us build it. The Good Hearts cannot tie into our fence now as it's erected fully within our property line based on the advice of my legal team. If they want to rebuild their fence on their property, they should apply for a permit and go through the same process that we have. If they do decide to erect a fence, we would encourage the town and the DRB to look into the neighboring encroachment so that those neighbors don't have to go through the same nightmare we have had to. The Good Hearts' actions have thwarted the initial will and ruling of the DRB and now they return with more false claims and delay tactics. We are requesting you to see through the legal games and to finally enable the safe use of our property, which we own and pay meaningful property tax on by approving the fence in place and removing the now impossible to fulfill condition described in 8A. Those are my comments, and I'd also just like to add, some of your new faces. I went through the entire hour and 40 minute meeting from November 2021 and the content, what was covered in that meeting is beyond the pale. We were talking about mountain bike trails through our property easements. I mean, the, the focus of this committee should be on supporting the town in their decision to approve our fence and helping us get to a point where we can get final approval on our project by removing 8A, which again, we accepted and we were prepared, fully prepared to execute on. But instead, we spent three years in litigation with these neighbors. And so that's my final comment.
Thank you.
Yes. Yes, you can ask the.
We might have some questions for you.
Can we ask you questions?
You need to come up to the, yeah, thank you.
How far, so just to confirm that the property.
It's about a foot.
I'm sorry?
It's about a foot.
It's a foot inward and the previous wood fence, how many feet over? It was eight feet encroaching, okay?
It's roughly eight feet on the other side.
Okay.
Any other questions? Alright, thanks.
Thank you.
I have a question for staff, actually. When it comes to building permits for fences and location, footings and on the property line versus on the applicant's land, what's, what's the, the typical kind of guidance slash the norm for erecting fences today?
So in, in most cases, they're on a property line and we ask for surveys. In this instance, it's totally on his property. There was, there was no survey for that particular fence because it was not going on a common property line. So they were allowed to put the footings and we would review where the footings are for the posts and approve them in that manner.
Thank you.
It's a little different when it's not on the property line. It's a little different when it's not on the property line.
So how so?
Because we wouldn't, the the survey requirement is very different. So if we're going to put it on a common property line, we require that it's string, that there's a string line, and that we see where the survey is and where the where the the line, the posts are.
Okay, and is it typical for applicants, even if it's on a property line, for the footings to be exactly half on one property, half on the other property, or are the footings typically fully on the applicant's side typically?
So we do ask property, if if we're on a property line and the footings are going to go to others, either side, that the property owners agree to that footing being there. Otherwise, it has to be entirely on the applicant's property.
So that's the norm.
Yes.
Typically is the entire footing and the entire fence is on the applicant's property. Okay.
Unless the two property owners agree
Yeah.
that that footing can be there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
That's fine.
Quick questions are, um, if you is there something in the code that says if you you have the right to build a fence as long as it's six feet, when does it have to go to you for um for review? It's it's any fence?
Anything over forty-two inches.
Anything over forty-two inches?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful.
Any other questions for staff? All right, um, with that, we'll bring up the Goodhearts.
Oh, sure. Absolutely. Okay, um, thank you all for being here tonight, and thank you for serving on this board. I'm Kathleen Goodheart, and I live at twenty-three eleven Spanish Trail Road with my husband John and our three daughters. So we care about this fence because, as you saw in the um, map that the director showed earlier on, our front yard is a portion of the backyard of nineteen sixty Straits View. So we look directly out at the perimeter fence, and in fact, thousands of feet of that perimeter fence, and it's between us and the view of the bay and the Golden Gate Bridge. And it's also immediately adjacent to our home, so we see this fence outside of many of the windows of our home, including bedrooms and living rooms. So it's it's a very big visual impact on our home, but it's many hundreds of feet below the nineteen sixty Straits View home. So I don't think it's relevant at all, but I simply want to say the statements about me personally are false and about my family are false. It's totally irrelevant. It's disturbing that those false statements were made to all of you, and I I'll leave it at that. It's unfortunate that I feel we're being punished for participating in this process, and that's something you may have seen in the in the record so far. So when we moved to twenty-three eleven Spanish Trail in two thousand ten, there was no perimeter fence at nineteen sixty Straits View, and the wooden post fence in our backyard already existed. Our understanding is it had been there for many decades. In two thousand twenty-one, when the Kefers applied to put in the AstroTurf Field and the perimeter fence, this board spent a lot of time thinking about what that perimeter fence should should look like. Um, and there were two recorded hearings, and we've included some of the video clips that we think are relevant in what we've provided to you from those videotaped hearings. Um, the board clearly rejected the chain link fence that the Kefers wanted to build as a perimeter fence, and some of the comments of the board members at the time were, um, it's not a nice fence to look at. It's like a slap in the face, and it conveys the message, if I can't see it, I don't care what you can see. And the board, um, condition eight, as we've talked about tonight, came up with two options. One is a wood post and cap fence with hogwire or the fence that existed on the nineteen sixty Straits View property at the time that um, Chair Chong took a picture of and shared with the members of the board. So there's the photo of the fence that used to exist, not on the prom perimeter, many hundreds of feet up from the perimeter on nineteen sixty Straits View. This fence, um, we know what fence this is. We know exactly how big it is because it was commercially available at the time. It's called the Deer Defender. It has one inch um, supports. As you can see, the supports are not in every section of the fence, and Chair Kim remarked at the time, it's a nice fence. It sort of goes away when you look at it. And the reason why is because it has very narrow supports, one inch, that aren't in every section of the fence, and the posts are square and have decorative tops to them. So the board said you can either build this fence or a wood cap and post fence. And here's a close-up of the fence that is described in condition eight. Um, this was our backyard fence that we've talked about when we moved into the house in two thousand ten. As mentioned, Mr. Keffler destroyed this fence in two thousand twenty-two. Um, and this is the subject of condition eight, and I think I'm I'm just going to read condition eight A, excuse me, eight A. On the eastern boundary line of the property where an existing wood fence was constructed, enclosing a garden on the applicant's property, the applicant shall relocate, reuse, or rebuild in kind the same fence as currently erected at or near the property line. So that's condition eight A. And here's another photo of that fence. So after deliberating in two different meetings and coming up with condition eight and condition eight A, a few weeks later, um, the Kefers constructed a chain link fence, and as the director explained, um, there was a permit issued in error. When the error was realized, the stop work order on the chain link fence was issued. But um, in two thousand twenty-four, just a few months ago in August, the um, Kefers completed the fence that they had started, and this is what they have constructed. Um, this is not, in our view, similar to the fence that Chair Chong shared, and that used to exist, the Deer Defender fence. The posts are industrial and much heavier. These crossbars that have been put in are really nothing like those in the Deer Defender fence, which are, these are more than fifty percent as big, and what they did is they just took the posts that had been sitting around for the cyclone fence after the stop work order and then sort of stuck them up on this fence. And um, we think the result is has suffers from all the same deficiencies as a chain link fence. It's not nice to look at. It doesn't sort of go away um, and sort of communicates, if I don't have to look at it, I don't care what you see. Here's some other photos of the fence and that is the um what the applicant calls the compost pile, and the signage does need to be permitted under the town's rules, but it is not. Um, this is the um, area where he has constructed that same fence, and it abuts what is left of our existing, pre-existing backyard fence that he tore down in two thousand twenty-two. Um, it is not a foot off the property line. I was a little bit surprised to hear the director's responses to Vice Chair Rosner's questions because this fence, the applicant always intended this fence to go on the property line. There is no question in the application that you all received in two thousand twenty-one that the applicant intended to put this on the property line. We, as you know, have a dispute over the property line. I never once heard that the town asked for the survey or the lines to ascertain where that fence should go. Instead, what the DRB said at the time is, look, you guys have a property line dispute. We're not going to get involved in that. But what we are going to opine on and include in resolutions is what this fence must look like. And also clearly, on condition eight A, I think Assistant Town Council Fleishman was prescient because if you watch those deliberations, he asks the question after um, Member Berger went through the condition eight A as it's written. He asked, does it matter the location of the fence? I can foresee an issue in the future around condition eight A based on the location, and the board talked about it and came to the conclusion the location does not matter. If the Kefers destroy our backyard fence, they must construct a like-kind fence. And as you can see, what they've constructed abuts our fence. I do not believe it's accurate that any of that fence is over the property line, nor do I believe if the town actually required a survey and looked at it, would they conclude that this fence he's built is a foot away from what the Kefers believe to be the property line. At any rate, location does not matter under condition eight A. If he destroyed it, he must reconstruct it, and there's no reason that a wood post and cap fence should not be constructed in place of what they've destroyed. I think the director suggested considering changed circumstances, but the only changed circumstances are that he destroyed our fence that existed there and then erected this fence, which is in violation of a stop work order. It is um inconsistent with the DRB resolution, and the director didn't mention, the town also issued a pre-citation notice on this fence, which the applicant has not complied with. So here's a couple more photos of our um, backyard fence. There's really no reason at all for this board to abandon condition eight A. It was well thought out, and there is no changed circumstances that would result in a decision to to remove it. Um, with respect to the um condition eight, going back to that for a minute, and that the the fence that has been constructed, at a minimum, the supports should go away. I don't think the supports are necessary, and if the supports remain, they should be the size of the Deer Defender fence that was approved, which again is one inch, and not in every section of the fence. That makes a real difference from the visual impacts of the fence.
Just from a time standpoint, you're thirty seconds?
Yeah, I'm all good. So um, the other thing I would say is I think the DRB should think about the precedent that is set here. So we have an applicant where the DRB rejected a fence. The applicant shouldn't be able to bully his way into the fence that was rejected. And also where we have a situation where there's not a valid permit, there's not even a valid application. I think we heard that from Director Tassini. There's a violation of a stop work order. There's a violation of a pre-citation notice. Uh, this is not a situation where we believe that the DRB should go back and change conditions in light of all this. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have some questions for you. Yeah, um, first is you're insinuating, I think you're intimating by them destroying the fence that they did illegally. Could you explain whether or not that property line dispute um, uh, was the cause of was the reason and the rationale why the wood fence was destroyed? Because was it over the property line, and was it not?
So um, yeah, so you're asking about the litigation, and I'm happy to talk about it. I don't think it's relevant. So um, the the litigation involves both the property line and our waterline easement that we obviously feel very strongly about because the only water that supplies our home goes across the applicant's property, and he's obviously done a lot of building up there, and so that's concerning for us. Um, so in the the court, the judge came out to the property and looked at the issues there, and there are there are two different easement issues and concluded that there's a likelihood that we'll succeed on the merits and issued a preliminary injunction. But the court failed to require us to post a bond. So Mr. Keffler and his counsel concluded that because the court didn't require us to post a bond, the preliminary injunction wasn't effective. So despite the fact that the court had issued it, Mr. Keffler showed up on our property line with a chainsaw and wire cutters and took that fence down until we called the police and asked him to stop, but the fence was already down at that point, but then the court required thereafter a bond and put the preliminary injunction back in place. Mr. Keffler appealed it. The Court of Appeal upheld the court's decision, and that's why it's been so long because Mr. Keffler appealed it. But the Court of Appeal upheld the court's decision on the preliminary injunction, but we did opt not to post an additional bond for all the fees he's incurred in appealing it, even though we won. Um, so the preliminary injunction is no longer.
I'll stop you because I.
We don't, we don't want to, I just want to know simply whether or not there was a resolution on where the the property line was.
No, trial's in February.
Okay, so that has not been resolved yet.
So does the town have an opinion on where where the property line is?
Does the town what?
Does the town have an opinion on where the property line is?
There were surveys that were done.
And so for right now, we're to assume those surveys are correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's that's what we're trying to figure out. Thank you.
Can I just quickly clarify this?
There was. If you if you could first introduce yourself, please.
My my name is John Goodheart. I'm the Hut Kathleen's husband.
For the record, yeah, yeah.
And I'm John Goodheart. I'm Kathleen's husband, and I'm a resident at twenty-three eleven Spanish Trail. When this fence started to be built, um,
Yeah, I, you know.
I'm saying there was a survey. The town did a cer- I mean, the survey was conducted by Mr. Keffler. The fence posts were uh, the holes were were dug based on that survey. Doug Hake came out several times, had a chalk line, was was sure that they were on Mr. Keffler's side of the property, but by mere inches. So that's where, you know, there was a survey done. There was a chalk line done. The the post holes were dug, and several of them were filled, and it was based on a chalk line. So so I think that's been somehow lost in this process.
Okay.
And and Director Tassini, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any additional questions for the for the appellant?
Yeah, I I do. Um, can you just describe the um, the wood fence? Where else is that on your property? Is is that still intact? How long? What sides? Um, we saw a couple pictures, but putting it together would would just be helpful.
It goes all the way around our house. So it goes, um, there's a, there is another backyard area and another lower yard area, and it's the same vents throughout that entire area. The only place around our property it doesn't exist is in the front yard.
Okay, and that's all still intact?
It is all still intact, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, any additional questions? All right, so with that, we're going to open it up to the public. Um, we'll also have a chance to bring both the applicant and the uh, appellant back up. Um, so is there anybody here that is uh, wanting to comment on this uh, application? Please come forward. Again, if you could, if you could state your name, um, your address, and keep your comments to three minutes, please.
Um, Margaret Levine, and I have the property adjacent to John Goodman, and it's also adjacent to the Keffler property, and so the um, fence goes along my property as well. So um, I, because the fence is on a very far away place in my property, like I don't even see it. It's above the eucalyptus grove in the middle of the boonies, so to speak. So I hadn't been looking at it. I mean, I have to literally, I have a bad leg, and I have to literally go up through like a jungle to get up there. But I did go up to the Goodheart property today to look at the fence that we're talking about, and where there used to be a wooden fence, there's now this fence, and it looks like, kind of like a prison fence with these big signs, you know, with like bad property, like it doesn't look like an a fence that you have in a home setting. So again, my fence, I don't know if they put those same signs up on my side of the fence because it's up in the middle of nowhere, but there's like, you know, five red signs in the middle. It's like, just seems really obtrusive, or if that's the right word, and it seems a little intense for a a family home fence. So that's all I can say. Like, my fence, because I don't look at it, it's if I ever built up there, it probably wouldn't be a great fence, but it's not an issue right now.
Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, any additional public comment? All right, we can go to the Zoom call. If you're on the Zoom call and wish to make any public comment, please use the raise hand feature at the bottom of the screen.
Chair Chong, I have a hand raised from Ronald Stafford, and I'm going to turn on the microphone for them to speak.
Thank you.
My name is Ronald Stafford. I live in the, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Uh, I'm at two three oh nine Spanish Trail Road. Uh, I'm a neighbor of the Goodhearts and the Kefers, and uh, the one condition made in two thousand twenty-one were the extensive work that Mr. Keffler did in building hockey fields and during major excavation and building a large retaining wall where I think most of his money is gone. Um, the only condition the city put on the Kefers was to have a decent-looking fence on the lower property line, similar to what they already had the deer uh, fence up near the house. And this fence obviously doesn't match the original fence that was near the house. And I have to concur with the Goodhearts. They have been very good neighbors. I've never. And I have to concur with the Good Hearts. They have been very good neighbors. I've never they were accused of trespassing and they were just checking the water line when their water was turned off by all the construction on the Kefir property. Uh, so I think so much of the contentious statements made by Mr. Kefir are totally out of line with the behavior of the Good Arts in my experience, uh, being neighbors for them. One other question I do have is I don't notice a gate on this fence that would allow the fire department in readily in case of a grass fire. I could have missed it. It's a very long fence, but there's certainly no gate close to my property.
All right, anything else?
That that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any additional public comment in the room or on the Zoom call?
Chair Chung, there are no hands raised on the Zoom.
All right, thank you. Uh, with that, the applicant has an opportunity to come back up for three minutes. All right, and it hurts also. All right, uh, with that, we'll close the public unless we have some questions.
I just have a question for staff. Signs, what I I recently learned there's a sign ordinance and a process and where does that go into fence design and how should we think about signage?
So I know you guys always love when I say this. That's not before you tonight. I know you love me when I say that. I'm trying to focus in the discussion. We are aware of that. We are researching it. I have spoken to the police department. I am working on it, but it is not before you tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for clapping.
It's called a slap your hand.
Not trying to keep you focused, just trying to keep you focused.
Any additional questions for applicant or appellant or staff before we close the public hearing? I have stuff for you, stuff later. I just, it's, you know, we know it's a pain and a pain to have to reopen it. So if there's any questions, let's ask it now.
Can you have two fences adjacent to each other?
So the one thing that we have in our code, you can, but you, if it's not three foot separation, then we have to use a combined height. So in other words, if he has a six foot fence, they have to move three feet away or we have to combine. I know it's 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 mind numbing, but it is a part of our code. So if he, if the Good Hearts place a fence that is closer than three feet to his existing fence, then we would look at, let's say they gave me a a six foot fence, we would have to look at the combined height of twelve feet. If it's closer than the three. I know, Jim, it's been in there forever.
Needs to be changed.
I know, but it's been there forever. Um, and so it's a three foot separation between two fences. Unless you wanna, like if you had a three and a three, you could do it. So you'd get a total of six. But in this instance, they would have to be three feet apart.
But
he's she's saying.
I agree. I I understand.
Yeah, yeah.
Are you so sorry, it doesn't matter or it doesn't?
It doesn't matter.
Okay, so the process would be you'd then need a variance for a twelve foot. Okay.
That's correct.
Okay, all right, with that, we'll close the public portion of the hearing. Maybe before we start, I again, I I think that focusing our discussion today really on what we have to decide, which is two decisions, um, the first one being in condition eight. Is that in compliance with what we originally approved or or added as a condition? And then uh, that's eight and then eight A is, uh, maybe we should just read it real quick. The applicant shall construct the proposed perimeter fence with wood post and caps with fence material that does not reasonably obstruct views of a similar kind already and you already used on the property, such as hogwire or similar material of the existing fence, subject to the approval of the director. Hogwire is a typical welded wire fence. Um, and then eight A is on the eastern boundary line of the property where an existing wood fence was constructed enclosing a garden on the applicant's property. The applicant shall relocate, reuse or rebuilding kind the same fence as currently erected at or near the property line. So, you know, I think we've heard a lot of things around like signage and all and lawsuits and all that. I I think that just sticking to these two decisions that we have to make will uh, help keep us focused. So I'd ask that, yeah.
Can I just make one correction? We looked at the code and it says if the fence is on the same property line, so if you're not on the same property line, you could be closer than that three foot.
Okay, so we can have two fences right along each other.
There's two or more fences are if two or more fences are constructed on the same property with a sep- separation of three feet or less between the fences, uh, the faces of the structures, I'm sorry. The height of the respective structures shall be combined to determine the total wall or fence height. If the fences and or walls are separated by a horizontal difference greater than three feet, the heights of the fences and or walls shall be calculated separately and should not be combined to determine total height.
So since they're on different properties.
It could be within that. Yes, I'm I I apologize for that.
Okay. I think the first question we have to answer is what the the degree, what similar means. And I
Yeah, so let's start start us off. And there was three of us that were that were here last.
The word is, the wording is not exact. We said similar to. I think what's kept and we have to, you know, ask, is the fence similar to your image? It doesn't have to be exact, right? Like all the different members don't have to be exactly the same size. There's no measurements that were attributable to those to those members. I believe it's actually similar. I believe that the fence is similar. Jimmy, you may disagree. I mean, it's a degree, but it's not, it's not the same. It didn't say the same. It said similar. And so there is a range that we have to consider and like, is the range this wide? Is it this wide? Like, I mean, I see that there's no top cap, that it's black, it's it's, um, you know, it's, there's these, uh, what do you call it? Uh, diagonal members. I, yes, that in the image, the diagonal members seem to be a little bit thinner, but versus the vertical members. But that is just pushing. I think that's just, I think it's it's up for interpretation. And if we disagree with the community directors, um, the the director of community developments decision, we are setting a precedent as to what similar means and we've given her discretion. So I I I feel pretty strongly that Dina did use her authority that we provided her to make her judgment call, to make a judgment call whether or not that was similar. So I I feel strongly about that.
All right, maybe a fresh perspective from Alex?
Well, obviously I wasn't on the board during November twenty twenty one. I did watch the entire hour and forty minutes last night.
I'm so sorry.
Cause I'm I'm dedicated slash I wanted to hide from my children. You know, I I have more a stronger perspective on the decision around eight A because I think there was a lot more specificity in that discussion.
Yeah, but we're talking A.
I I I agree, I agree.
Yeah.
Where I'm at on 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 eight is I um, there just wasn't, there was a lack of specifics in in the condition of it didn't, it didn't specify measurements. It didn't, there was no drawing to to um, to to match it from from a dimension standpoint. And I I'm in agreement that
We gave her discretion.
That we gave her, that that you gave her discretion. I think there was intention behind the design and what the board members were deliberating on and and the the motivation behind that black, the 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 black design. I don't want to personally, since there's three of you, um, I don't want to speculate what was the motivating factor of the showing the picture and the language saying similar. And um, so that that's kind of where I'm at is it's, you know, for me, it's it's your kind of like a you know, a little bit of a, it's like an NFL referee, like on a challenge play, you know, that we are overruling a decision and you you have to have, you know, a clear shot and clear data um, on on each of these decisions. And I think, again, eight A is, I have an opinion on that, but for for this one, I think the condition was um, a lack of specificity. And um, I I think there's a spectrum and I don't it's it's hard for me to put an opinion on that right now where where this is on on the spectrum, so.
It's a spectrum, but we gave somebody else discretion to determine what that what to define what the word similar is. And so for us to say, no, we we actually changed our mind. We shouldn't have given her discretion. We are second guessing the the discretion that we provided to to development. That's what I feel. It's not about, it's not about, for me, it's not about the word similar. It's about, we gave her discretion to determine that. We did not give her much more guidance. Yeah.
First of all, I think the fence is industrial looking rather than residential looking. And the key culprit is that very big diagonal on every one of the verticals, which is totally unnecessary. In a wire fence such as this, you, each of those fence posts is inconcrete. They're not going anywhere. The diagonal, I don't even know why they put it in. It's not, it's just a superfluous detail. I think the thing that's most concerns me is we we didn't, we weren't smart enough to define what we wanted. And the applicant has taken advantage of that. And I think it's it's an overstepping on his part and ours. Understepping on ours. I'd like to go back to the beginning of the design, which was, we wanted a vertical wooden post with hogwire in between it. Now hogwire is different from chicken wire or pigeon wire. Chicken and pigeon wire are those little twisted wires and they have very small holes. And what is on this fence today is very close to chicken wire. It's a little heavier gauge. Hogwire is rectangular, square welded wire. It it is typically four by four, six by six or eight by eight. And it's it's much more architectural in character. And that's what the discussion revolved around. Yeah, to my recollection in in our previous meeting. I think this looks not only commercial, but as as one of the people in the audience suggested, it's prison like. And I think it's an unfortunate choice of of uh, struck the structural part of the fence. Posts are eight feet on center and there's a big diagonal that goes from one top to the next and then down. I don't know of any other fence in all of Tiburon that is built like that. And to me, it just is an affrontery. And I think the issue of a an access point, several access points is probably necessary. Probably at least one for fire trucks and and probably there should be accesses every couple hundred feet for for people. Uh, the applicant himself would probably find that was important. Yes, he can put a lock.
I think let's let's stick to to the two items that we have to make decisions on.
Well, what I want to make a decision on is I think we ought to retain the eight A. I think we ought to retain the eight A application. And
So let's let's do eight A second. So just for right now, like sticking to eight, which is, is the fence like in line with the condition that.
Yeah, no, it's not.
Okay, all right, so, okay.
Can I can I bring up one thing? Do you mind? I I I do think it's important to to maybe discuss the process. I agree with you that there was given uh, discretion to the to the to the director. But I if if I'm not mistaken, and correct me if I'm wrong, the the process should have been, the 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 plans would have been submitted. The director would have approved them and then there may have been an appeal. This, the fence has been built. I think you're, we do have to remind ourselves we're just because the, you know, think through like if we evaluated this this plan without the fence already being built. And if that is at all impacting kind of the thoughts around the director's discretion and things like that, I just want to call that out.
Yeah, it's it's it should never be, if if there's something built as a priority that and it required decision by its design review. It's not necessary. I mean, we can't, we can't go back and second guess all of our decisions, right?
No, but we are a design review.
I I understand that, but we gave.
We don't have to cover our derriers for or the staffs for these things. We we need to make a decision.
So every time.
For, but as long as we're all alive.
I understand that, but I mean.
Yeah, please, everybody, we closed the public hearing.
So the 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 question here is, are we gonna always second guess the director?
Well, so so I guess.
Yeah, that's.
I haven't had a chance to, at least on on, so like I, this is like, this picture has become kind of like famous or notorious, I think, over the last three years. You know, and then I I regularly go out and I take pictures to help me visually remember stuff. And in this case, it was kind of like, hey, uh, at least what I had in mind when we were having that conversation was like a heavy fence with top rails and, you know, mid rails and that type of thing was was not what I wanted. Cause the whole conversation was around like, this is open space. This is like, you know, anything that you're gonna do to to block up that view is is bad. So, you know, I I did not necessarily have like a diameter in mind. We didn't specify it needs to be like at least, you know, amount. We didn't specify the brand or anything like that. You know, I went out and looked at the fence I put in today, you know, it it's a little heavier than I would have wanted, but I it's still, it's not, it's not unlike the, you know, photo that I took, right? It's it's not a, you know, and the in between that happened in there, which, um, you know, staff was able to put a stop word on. There was photos floating around of a chain link fence with the top rail and a mid rail that clearly was not, you know, what I had had in mind when we um, added the condition eight. So for me, at least the the fence that's in there, um, you know, is is close enough, similar enough to what was originally, you know, what what I had in mind. And I think that the, you know, staff was in line with, you know, at least again, it's on one person, but kind of what I had in mind when we were going down the uh, the initial application. So it sounds like we're at least on on eight, not to talk about eight A yet. So on eight, it sounds like there's three of us that are in one place or.
Like I said, I I I think I like, I'm probably in an abstention in this one because I think it's just there was a lack of specificity that I'm trying to evaluate and it's very hard to do. And and I I I think where I I struggle a little bit is your the process would have been a- and really what I'm trying to understand amongst the three of you is, is the fence design, has it met your expectations of what we said? It started a little bit when you say it's a little heavier than you would have liked because the process should have been, there would have been a fence design submitted. Dina may have accepted it, uh, approved it. It may have been appealed. And the design would have been reviewed. But instead, and and then there would, there wouldn't have been a fence built. And maybe you guys, people were discussing, hey, like, do we actually think this picture was an inch? Or is it one point seven eight inch inches? And that, maybe there would have been a condition that says, hey, like, let's let's agree, like, now we can add specificity to this uh, decision and we're gonna say, hey, it's it's an inch and a quarter or something like that. That process, that's not how the process went because fence was built, there was stop work order and and now we're at where at, so.
But we we're not, we're not a prescriptive body. We don't say like, you shall do one inch stood up because that's not our role. Our role is to guide, but not to like come down and say.
We can, we can be that specific.
We can be.
And I think the, I mean, again, I can't put myself back in on a Zoom call during COVID in twenty twenty one. And I I think the whole thing was like, hey, let's find a compromise between like a really heavy ugly fence, right? Um, again, this is, this is, you know, the the fence is the applicant's fence, right? There was a desire, it was stated desire in the original meeting of like, hey, I want to be able to have a fence that prevents deer from going in, provide some security for my family. And so we were trying to find a place, as I recall, that was like, hey, what is a good compromise? One that's not too heavy.
Let's back up a little bit and ask what the what the actual process was. Was this fence built before they had a building permit?
No, this was part of a design review board meeting.
No, no.
So can I, can I answer that question? Yes. Um, so as I
So as I stated, there was a building permit for the fence that was issued in error with the top and the middle bars. The applicant came back in and worked with me to remove the top middle bars and the chain link that was on that fence. The post remained. He provided me aid a plan. With the crossbars and the other materials.
The diagonal.
Yep, yep, with the diagonals. I found that to be substantially compliant, but I cannot put a final stamp on it because there's eight A. And this is why he brought forward the amendment. There's eight A that says on this eastern boundary. Your perimeter fence needs to be this other material and tie in. And that's not what's there, so I can't finalize it. Okay, that's where we are. Um he has a stop work because he was building the fence. We realized the error. We put a stop work. We also had a citation. So there are met. There are. There have been actions that have gone in. In into this. There was a permit. Um he does need to provide to me a final. Depending on your decision, um a final plan that I can approve.
But as far as I can tell, the perimeter fence is all built. Is that not correct?
That is correct.
So somewhere in there it got built in spite of a stop work order.
That is correct.
And then.
He has a citation on that.
And then. What is before us would require him to come back and rebuild a section ninety feet long?
So what would have to have? They would not need to come back to you. What he needs to do is to provide. If depending on your decision, right? I I don't know which way you're going. But if you're looking at eight A, let's just talk. I mean, we haven't finished eight, but let me go to eight A since since that's where it's going. If the board decides that that portion of the fence needs to remain as what was in the resolution. Then the applicant will need to come back and provide me part of that. Plan with that detail in there.
Okay.
So he would have to change that.
If eight A.
If eight A is kept, if eight A isn't kept.
Yep.
Then I can go ahead with what he has there, go through the process to finalize that.
I don't even know. I don't even know how eight A would work.
On that basis, let me just suggest that.
Talk about eight and then we'll talk.
That. To my voice. The way out of this is for us to just require the eight A fence be built. As and and the eight A section be be kept.
Well, here's here's dilemma that I I see.
So let's well, here's go to eight A.
Because I'm just like, okay, there's a, let's say this is a property line, right? Let's say this big fat thing's a property line. There's a metal fence here. There is. The wooden fence here, right? How would you connect the two like? So it would just stop here.
Yeah.
Then they would just have a wooden fest.
Fence will stop. Wooden fence will stop at a certain.
I think that's like the big thing. Could could you guys be medable to two fences going along?
Why not? I've seen it before.
I I think I would, I mean, to to resolve this issue, like, how do you deal with this jog?
That's not before like. Should I say eight A?
Yeah, please, please.
Eight A. And again, I'm I'm trying to be as objective and like really like. Are we we're reversing a decision? And I watched the whole video last night. It was very clear, as was mentioned, um Assistant Town Attorney. Fleishman came in and there was discussion at length of like, hey. This fence is gonna may not be in the, you know, make not connect. It may be built on the applicant's property. And you all agreed that it would still have to be built in kind. That I I feel pretty confident in interpreting what. The discussion was. Meaning wood. It was and it was called out that it was wood, um because it was being clarified that it was built in wood. So. I interpreted that whole conversation and condition under the assumption that. The fence was gonna be remo- that section of the fence that was an encroachment. Um or stated as an encroachment was going to be removed. It was gonna be built on the property line. And it's never built on the property line. It's gonna be built all footings on the applicant's line and and it's um and and it's gonna be had to be wood. That's how I. Interpreted that condition and that the entire discussion because I I felt like that was not. There was a lot of specificity around that dis- discussion. From watching from watching from watching it last night. And I don't think it's strange that fences don't connect or.
I mean, obviously you can stick a piece of wire in there and you close the.
Yeah.
Fence. That's not an issue.
So yeah, what's what's your comment on eight A? You kind of did it earlier, but.
I think I I think it should be approved so that the fence, the rebuilt fence gets built out of appropriate materials. And I don't see a I I I do believe that the diagonal should be taken off of the. Uh existing fence all the way around because they are superfluous and they don't. They're not unattractive and they add to the visual blockage of the fence. Which.
You're going back to eight now, but for eight for eight, yes, for eight for eight A.
Yeah, but they're, you know, they're. I've I've finished with eight A now.
So.
So in in any case, I think removal of the diagonals would have a lot of would save. A lot of grief with perceiving that fence just as it as it bounds across the. The the ground, it's much more imposing with the diagonal than just vertical posts. Even if you just leave the wire, which is. You know, you see through the wire, but you see through it much more if you don't have a boundary condition on it like. There's no top rail on that fence, which is good. So you don't. You don't see it as much as you would. And so I would say as part of this, we ought to suggest the diagonal be removed. And the eight A fence, if you will, the alternative wood fence be built.
Okay. And on, I don't know if I was clear on what your eight A position was or if it's changed after you've heard everybody else.
I just wanted to sides just not even address this property line issue. That's why I was just like have two fences go along each other because then. We're gonna have this issue now where they're gonna say, well, our fence should be here and they're gonna say, well, our fence should be here. I don't know. I don't want to be part of that. So maybe it just. That's why I was proposing maybe with just two fences, just so that there's they're not touching each other and have to deal with each other, but.
But.
They're but they're look, the the issue that someone's gonna have is that. If it's three feet or two feet or one feet, like people can pass through and they don't want somebody passing through. They don't want people trespassing. So like. I I don't know. I don't know how this is. This is a technical. Yes, sorry. So we got to figure out like how we deal with this. How do we connect the two? How do we not connect it? Because there's gonna be a fight. There's gonna be a huge fight about this. So it's wood all the way up to there? See, I see, because what I what I wanted, what I want to eliminate is if we say. Okay, here's a metal fence over here. We want the wood fence on this side. Like, I want to eliminate all that discussion. Do you see what I'm saying? Because it's on his property. He's like, well, this is on my property now.
I guess what I'm trying to do is like, and maybe I'm not communicating well enough, but. I'm trying not to have an opinion of like the conditions that happened in November of twenty twenty one. Th- this discussion should be. Did did something meaningfully change such that eight A should be dropped? Like, I don't know if it's. You should be relitigating eight A or whether or not that was inappropriate.
But that that is what we're relitigating simply because the applicant has requested that basically that condition be removed in order to get final approval. And then the appellant has appealed the applicant's desire to remove that because they would still like the original fence that was specified by.
The condition that's changed is. My understanding before was that the fence was on the property line. Now it's clearly on the applicant's side, so. That's a condition that's changed, in my opinion, because now you're having like, I don't want to. I don't want to approach this. I don't want to talk about this property line. That's why I'm a little like. Reticent to say. We should this if this fence is clearly on this side. That this portion has to be that because then they're gonna be like, well, now they're they're occupying our property. I I I don't know. That 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 really gets me nervous.
So I guess for A A A for me, like, I mean, I've I've been on the fence. Back and forth like all week as uh everything's been, you know, flying around and late mails and going out this morning like. I uh. I definitely think the conditions changed, but I don't think it's changed materially enough that my decision would have been like the whole reason that we were. Specifying like a very specific wood post was to, uh again, in the spirit of trying to find compromise. This was a fence that was. Right in their backyard. Um I I think it's still like moving it over one foot and it's still beyond the proper line. I don't think changes that that the whole. Reason that we were putting that condition was, you know, for the beautification of that fence. So. If it had been, if it had moved further away, like, let's just say it was ten feet into the property or something like that, then it's like, okay, well, maybe that. That doesn't have the impact and doesn't necessarily need the specifics around material, but it's and as you can see from that condition, it's a pretty specific like. You know, build this. This is what you we were approving in this condition to build. And I think there was a reason why in a in. A condition that we were specifying like, oh, you can do metal bars and hog wire and all these things. We called out. A very specific portion of that fence to be a different way. So I guess for me, it falls a little bit more into the. Like, one foot doesn't materially change. Like what what the impact to the neighbor and a lot of the stuff that we that we decide and deliberate on is like, what is the impact to the neighbor? What's the privacy impact? What's the light impact? What's the view impact, right? And I think that like the whole reason that we specified that material was because it was minimizing the impact for. For the neighbor, so. Yeah, on on A A. We're probably agreeing on something.
Do we want to be specific about this issue, though? Like, I don't want to talk about this. This is gonna hold. This is gonna be the conflict right here.
Why?
Because this this neighbor wants to prevent anybody from going onto their property.
It's still a perimeter fence. It still connects.
It's not connected. It goes here and then it's it goes here.
Wait, I I think I think that the neighbors would figure out a way to have posts. Right up on the property lines to close it off. But I I I don't. I don't think that at least for me, the the it's not like, uh. Again, what's before us is not how the fences connect together. What's before us is like. Do we?
The condition or keep it, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
So.
What's?
If I may, I just want to remind everyone that. A majority of the quorum has to say yes to pass a motion, so an abstention is not a vote. So if only to vote for a motion, it would not pass.
Okay. So the motion is.
Wait, so say that one more time? The majority of the quorum has to vote yes?
No, so to pass to to for a motion to pass, yes. So here, that would mean three people would need to vote to carry a motion.
So so.
Very yes or no.
So to be clear, there's there was two decisions that was being asked of us, right? So is that two different motions that we would need to make? Okay, all right, that that.
So two, one, one, an abstention is not a vote. It doesn't.
But two, one, one would be a two to one.
Yeah, but for this type of a this type of an issue, she's saying that we have to have a quorum. And we we have a quorum.
Majority of the quorum has to.
We have.
Vote on a motion for it to carry.
Yeah.
To approve, you know, whatever, yes or no.
In other words, you need four, zero, three, one.
Basically, right, yeah, to to pass exactly. Two, two, yeah.
I'd like to make a motion um to uphold the this um the director's decision on um condition eight.
And deny the appeal.
And deny the appeal.
So so this is. Not we're not eight, but not eight A, right? Just eight.
That's correct. That's just eight.
I would second that. Uh all those. So this is this is, yeah, so just to be clear, this is this is, yeah, this is um four, eight, um that the fence. That has been built.
Uphold the director's.
I'll uphold the director's decision that it is built in compliance with uh our original condition eight. So. There was a motion for that a second. Um all those in favor?
I.
I. Opposed?
If you abstain, the motion does not carry.
Board Member Kim?
I.
Board Member Malat?
So the, yeah, so we're doing a roll call vote for the motion that's on the floor for uh basically upholding the um. Uh the director's. On the existing fence.
That is substantially compliant.
I vote no.
Vice Chair Rosner?
I'm gonna abstain because I need to think about it.
Let's do it first.
The motion does not carry. Yes, we do.
Yeah, we do. We have three votes, so it does not carry.
So it's not carried.
But Chair Chang? Just so we get half for the record.
Yeah, I was a yay.
Thank you.
All right, so then let's uh let's 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 try.
Figure that out.
Let's try uh eight A.
I'm gonna do. I'm gonna do an interesting motion. I'm gonna have a motion that we uphold the director's um. Decision and that we deny a change to condition eight A.
So for clarify, is it is that the motion or would it be basically?
They can do it.
I'm gonna try a different way.
So so what you're doing is saying. Denying the appeal. You really can't do that. It's two separate. Two separate application.
Okay, fine. Okay, so I will I will make a motion to um. To deny changing the condition eight A as originally articulated, so.
And I will second that.
Denied changing?
Yes, in other words, to keep it.
To keep it, to not remove it.
I.
So can we do a roll call vote?
Yes, please. So it was I just want to be clear. It's a motion to keep condition A.
Eight A.
Eight A, sorry.
Yes.
Denying the request to remove it.
Denying the request to remove. So that's the motion on the table.
You second it. So, yeah, I second it. So roll call it.
Roll call vote, please, yeah.
Board Member Kim?
I.
Board Member Malat?
I.
Vice Chair Rosner?
I.
Chair Chang?
I.
So that motion carries. So now we're.
We try again on on the other motion because.
Yeah.
Can I? Can we talk about this? Because if we if. If if we don't uphold the decision by the director.
They can do a different motion, yeah.
We don't have.
It has to be a different motion.
That's not the issue. I mean, it's there's a there's a cost to it. We're not giving a remedy. And so what's gonna happen if it do not? If it doesn't pass? What happens in that case?
If you don't find it in substantial compliance, you're gonna have to give us a different direction, I suppose, yes.
No, please, sorry, we can't have.
We can't. We closed the public comment. Just everybody, just let us finish. So. What would what would be different about the motion? What are you thinking?
The only way that Jim would accept is we clip off the diagonals. But not all of them, right? If there is, if it's movable.
But to be clear, the the original photo had diagonals.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, there was it wasn't it wasn't on a hundred percent of the.
One of them and they weren't so large and they weren't so high.
So I mean, what would make you happy, Jim? Like.
Take them all off.
See, so now you want them all off. That's different from what we had originally shared, that image. So.
I said I said that I I didn't identify any quantity that I. We we weren't talking about the quantity. I said, take the diagonals off. And that's what I mean, all of them.
But that's substantially different from what we recommended before because the image that we had before had diagonals.
Well, if you want to put a diagonal in every fiftieth one, that's fine, but that's all I saw was one diagonal and one post.
The the image that that that. That Chair Chang showed.
Totally, totally different fence too. I mean, you know, the fact you don't need the diagonal, that's the point.
Yeah, but that's like changing what we originally said, and so that's that leaves us up for, I mean.
I don't think that's a totally different fence.
Yeah, that's.
I'd to call it a toy to like if if it was like a solid wood fence. It's, it's called a toyed, like, if, if it was like a solid wood fence, or if it was a stone fence, or if it was like a changing with. Like, that would be a totally different fence. That's not a totally.
Visually, you need to take all the diagonals off. Make it an open fence.
Let's say, let's say if we make a recommendation and change the design, does that expose the city to litigation at this point? Because we already said we wanted it this way, and then.
Can I, can I, can I, yeah, I wanna, I wanna, like. So, I mean. And the questions that, um, uh, what I was trying to ask is, and the reason why I wanted to abstain is because of this. Condition. Lack specificity and it comes down to you guys approve the condition, hasn't met your expectations. And I want to know that answer. If that answer, and now knowing that I can't abstain, which was news to me. I rushed the motion, but.
It's not a yes or no question for me. It's. It's a degree issue, right? It's. There was an existing fence there, right? Before, when we visited, that was black and had, you know, it looked. Generally similar to that. This version is a little bit heavier, but. We did not specify, like, this has to be this size, this has to be this size, and I think it, it meets. It meets to my, to my. You know, better judgment, I think it, it does meet. What we had shown. I mean, it's, it's similar. We didn't say how similar.
I mean, I, I think we, 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 I mean, we've been in enough meetings, so hopefully the one that was on Zoom wasn't too different than, than what we do, which I, I feel is we often. Like, to avoid being here until midnight every time and specking out, you know, very specific stuff. We say, hey, look, we'll leave it to staff to approve a landscaping screen, that screen to property, for example, right? And it, and it's kind of semi vague like that, because we give the staff who does this for a living, as opposed to us that does this for a volunteer job. Like some, some room to be able to interpret kind of what we decided and. And make some decisions based on either materials that might be out there, plants that might be out there, or whatever. And so I guess I kind of feel like that was what was done that night, which is like, hey, you know. Here's a photo, this is kind of the idea that we had, that it's something that's not. Um, that it's not like a solid fence, or it's not a chain link with a top rail and a middle rail. It's, you know, something that you could see through, uh, at least that's what I had in mind. And, and I think that when staff. Approved it and let the applicant build that fence, that's what they had in mind. So. And, and, and that's what I wanted to understand, um, like. It. If it's met your expectations of the condition, then I, I.
What we want.
Support of.
I mean, the thing that we wa- really wanted, I mean, I, I. Let me know if I'm, I'm not articulating this correctly, but. We did not want like a baseball diamond chain link fence. That's what we wanted to absolutely avoid. That's what we were very clear on, like, it can't look like. Something with a top rail, a middle rail, that just looks, that just feels like a jail, so.
Hypothetically, if you were on the board then, right? Like, was, would you, would you have joined the, this, like, discussion around, like, that's kind of what? You, you would have wanted? I, I mean, uh, s- sorry, the public. Guys, knock it off. We're, 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 just come on. It's just, we've asked like nicely, we're volunteers, we live here in town. We try to get along with our neighbors, right? So, so I'm just, we're just, I, I, just please, please let us, let us finish, let us finish.
Yes. I think, I, I think we're gonna have to calm everyone down. This is the most out of control meeting we've had in a year.
Why don't we, why don't we say that we've had our vote and go on to our next stop applicant?
So, a- again, according to staff, we, we're in no man's land if we don't get to something, either providing direction, right?
Yeah, so I will, again.
Sorry, if I may, you can reconsider if one of, so if Alex, if board member Rosner or Jim Malat brings a motion to reconsider. You can put the same motion back on the table, or look at a different motion that is different than the one that failed.
Okay.
So we, we can reconsider. I, I, I don't think my opinion of the original, like, I'm trying to, uh. I'm trying to have an, make a decision on the action, which is, did this meet the condition? I, I think my opinion on what should have been conditioned at that point is, is irrelevant, and. Part of that was asking you and trying to figure out, has it met the expectation of you putting in that condition? Now that I've heard that. Um, I have, I, I, I can find support for the director's decision and we can reconsider. Okay.
I will make the motion to uphold the director's decision on condition number eight.
Oh, wait, because that motion failed, board member Rosner or board member Malat needs to put a motion on the table to reconsider. The motion, and then that motion has to get three votes, and then you can reconsider the motion. I know it's just processed, just clarifying.
Motion to reconsider the decision.
Original motion.
The original motion to uphold the director's decision that. The um, they have met condition eights' um, conformance. Second, do we have a second?
Whoever seconds, okay.
So can we have a roll call vote on the motion to?
Reconsider.
Board member Malat?
Nay.
Board member Kim?
Aye.
Vice Chair Rosner?
Aye.
Chair Chang?
Aye.
So the motion carries and you can now consider the original motion.
I'd like to re-bring, re-con, or bring up the original motion that we uphold the director's decision on condition eight.
Do we have a second?
Second.
And can we have a roll call vote, please?
Board member Kim?
Aye.
Board member Malat?
Nay.
Vice Chair Rosner?
Aye.
Chair Chang?
Aye. With that, the motion passes. So. With that, uh, that brings us to the end of PH one. Um, maybe a quick five minute break, uh, join back up here at nine forty-five. Eight forty-five, I'm sorry, uh, eight four, eight forty-five. Yes, eight four, eight, yeah, eight, eight forty, eight thirty-five, five minutes back here for PH two. Thank you.
All right. If everybody can take a seat, welcome back to this evening's design review board meeting. All right.
Okay.
All right, so next on this evening's agenda is PH two thirty-three Seafirth Road. The applicant or representative could you the format for the next three applications will be as follows, the applicant will have twenty minutes to present. We might have some questions, but at that point we'll open up to the public. Each member of the public will have up to three minutes to make any comments and then the applicant will be provided five minutes afterwards to address any of the concerns that were raised. Take it away.
All right, thank you. Hi. Everybody, I'm Phoebe Holsher, architect. I've got a fence in front of you. I apologize. Hopefully it'd be quick and smooth. So this fence is in Seafirth, the community of Seafirth, and it is basically a replacement project. Savannah did a very thorough staff report, which I will quote rather than try to paraphrase what she said at the end of what I have to say, just a few things. The existing fence, I'm gonna see if I can do this. Okay, so. There. So this is the existing fence being replaced to match this part of the fence. This fence has been here, the pool has been here since the nineteen fifty's. It's been here since before the neighborhood was here, so we've got precedent, the history of the of the fence and the pool. That's the existing fence there, it's clearly in need of repair, not even repair, replacement. And again, here you can see the street, this fence is being not being touched. And here are the two portions of this fence that we are proposing to replace with the same height that exists that has been there for decades. The fence separates two different uses, recreational use, the community pool on the inside of the fence, and then the residential use of the adjoining or adjacent properties. We are proposing to move the fence, this is the existing fence, and we are proposing to move it to the property line at this location. And then the property line kind of wiggles around and there's some existing trees that we're keeping, so we are kind of straightening the fence to the best of our ability and kind of doing a straight shot down the middle. There's an existing gate there that will be rebuilt and an existing gate there that we will be rebuilt. We propose to do a two different treatments on each side of the fence. This was carefully worked out by the neighbors and by the representative of the homeowners association. And this is exactly what they have requested with the fence matching the existing fence on the interior side of the proposed fence and plain redwood boards on the exterior facing the adjacent properties. We are proposing eight feet and therefore need a variance because that is what is existing and that has been existing since the neighborhood was formed. I would like to finish my short introduction with just a couple quoting the staff report because she says it better than I can. And there's no reason to try to speak in my own words. The current use as a community pool is unique, given the history and neighborhood context. This existing use creates a special circumstance due to the proximity of the lot to residential homes. The pool has also existed in this location with fences over six feet in height since before the residential neighborhood around it was constructed. Just got a couple more. The proposed fence aligns with the existing neighborhood character as the lot functions as a community space while still emulating an exterior material typical of residential fences, redwood, which can be found throughout Tiburon residential neighborhoods. And lastly, the strict application of the six-foot fence height requirement at this location would deprive the Seafirth community's ability to take full advantage of this communal pool by not providing a reasonable, comfortable level of privacy that this site has maintained in its neighborhood since its construction. This would deprive the neighboring properties adjacent to this communal pool of adequate privacy for their residential uses. So again, we are proposing to replace an ailing fence with a with a new one matching it. This is what the neighborhood has always known, it is between two very different uses. And I think it's very appropriate at this location. Thanks.
Any questions for the applicant? All right, seeing none, is there anyone for the public that wishes to comment on this project? All right, we could. You could state your name and address and keep your comments to three minutes, please.
Yeah, hi, my name is Walter Sanford and I live at forty-nine Seafirth Place. I'm my house is directly to the north, possibly a little bit northeast of the the fence. And my house is the closest house to the pool. I'm here because I'm very much in favor of this fence. It's needed for privacy, it's needed for particularly the noise, it's quite a noisy neighborhood pool, we've got thirty houses that all use this pool, people have gatherings, parties, teenagers, and I'd love to be able to keep a tall fence between us and that, and I hope you'll approve it.
Thank you. Any other additional comment? Here in the room? No, if we could go to the Zoom call, if you're on the Zoom call, please use the raise hand feature at the bottom of the screen and we'll let you in.
Chair Chong, there are no raised hands.
All right, thank you. With that, the applicant does have five minutes additional if you'd like. All right. Any questions before we close, public comment? All right, we will now close the public portion of the hearing, we would ask the public to please keep quiet while we deliberate. Would anybody like to lead us off?
I think this is an appropriate privacy fence being rebuilt. I don't know whether it has any mass of concrete inside the fence, but any more any more mass you can put on it would work better on the acoustic side. Aesthetically, it's attractive and the eight-foot height is appropriate, given the fact it's been there for longer than all of us have been around, except for me.
And you're able to make the findings for the four findings for the variants, right?
Yeah, I agree with a board member of my lot and can certainly make the findings for the variants request outlined by staff, so I'm very much in support of.
I can make the findings.
I can also make the findings for the variants, so it looks like we'd be looking for a motion.
I move that the that the motion to approve the applicants.
I think we'd be looking for adopt the we have a resolution, I believe, right?
Yeah, to adopt the resolution and that it's categorically exempt from CECL.
And do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
I.
Opposed? None, and with that, thirty-three Seafirth Place application is approved. All right. Moving right along to the next item this evening's agenda, PH three for Heathcliff Drive. Again, you've got twenty minutes to present, like.
Great. Awesome. Honorable Chair, members of the design review board, and my name is Rahul Kishore and I alongside my wife Neha Shah are the owners of Fort Heathcliff Drive. I would also give a special thanks to staff for all the help getting this application together. Today, we're presenting an application for a lot coverage variance to replace our existing deck. The slightly smaller deck that is built to last improves the livability of our indoor and outdoor space while not changing the character of our hillside or the neighborhood. We moved to Tiburon in twenty twenty-one from New York City, becoming owners of Fort Heathcliff started a new chapter for us. We got married soon after, started to think about building our family and we welcomed our son six months ago. Tiburon and Fort Heathcliff are the place that we plan to raise our growing family and live for many years to come. While Fort Heathcliff is a wonderful home, our early stewardship has shown us that changes and updates would need to be made to improve its safety and livability. During the atmospheric river we experienced in October twenty twenty-one, perhaps it's apps that we're going through yet another of those such of rivers today. Our deck sustained significant damage due to its design. It became clear that we needed to replace the deck with something that is more sustainable, livable, and most importantly, safe. Our new design encompasses these elements. Through our design process, however, we found out that the deck as originally built exceeds our FAR allotment. The expansion of the deck which occurred under the prior owners in twenty ten used a site survey which had more than a thousand square feet of additional space on the lot. We completed. We completed a new site survey which requires us to submit for this variance. We're here today to seek a variance to replace the existing deck with something that is smaller but would still be above our FAR allotment. Our existing deck is an integral element of our home, it spans its entire long south face. There are existing four existing doors that open out onto it. It isn't practical to change the size of the deck significantly as it would require significant changes in the character of our home in order to accommodate. Given the significant slope of our lot, the deck is a critical part of our living space. We believe our changes better integrate the deck into our overall site plan and alongside our landscaping work will make our outdoor space a special place for our family for many years to come. We've consulted with our neighbors throughout the process and have received support for our plan. With that, I'll return it over to our architect Sneha who can walk through the application in more detail.
Hi, everyone, my name is Sneha, not to be confused with the other owner Neha. I am the project architect and have been working alongside the homeowners and the landscape architect on this project. As Rahul mentioned, safety was a big trigger of why this deck, why we felt that this sector had to be rebuilt. I will go through some images that might help supplement that, so as you can see here highlighted. Let me see if I can. Oh, yeah, there you go. Oh, there you go. Okay, yeah, so the deck is over here, Heathcliff Drive is along here. So the deck is on the rear of the property and the property fronts on to the open preserve over here. There's very little. So the views looking out from the deck, you can see that there's very little neighbors or impacted neighbors of the existing deck, which is great, there's a great sense of privacy. And so we'd like to maintain that and in the same place. Sorry, this is some images of the damage sustained in the twenty twenty-one storm, which triggered a closer look at the construction of the deck and the ultimate replacement of it that would be needed. The existing deck footprint is highlighted on the left here and then overlaid in the same place over the right, just so you can see that it is in the same place with a similar, if not actually reduced footprint. So the variance that we are seeking is for a an overage in the lock coverage by point five percent, but still is point five percent below what the deck currently is today. In all other aspects, we are adhering to the site setbacks, height restrictions, etc. These were some of the images pulled from our variance package, but I think what's really important to note about the proposed deck design is, as Rahul mentioned, the safety aspect and also the fact of the inherent qualities of the site mean a very steep backyard or drop from the main level of the house. And it would be, our aim is to create the same sort of livable space at the same level as the main house. The house currently has a series of, oops, series of doors here, 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 and here that we were, we are maintaining and would like to obviously create access out from them. Some of the other designs that we had looked at included a series of smaller decks, but we felt that this was the least impactful and the least obtrusive to the overall site and experience of the site and the connectivity of the site. I might actually go to this slide here which shows this is the main level up here, and so being able to have an outdoor deck, which many of the properties adjacent to this property also have and enjoy would be greatly appreciated and I don't think would actually impact anyone to any significant degree. I think that's it.
Just a quick question, there was a mention from the applicant about afar, but this is all.
It's lock coverage.
Lock coverage, okay, so thank you, all right. Perfect. Any other questions? Nope, all right, thank you. Well, with that, we'll open up to the public, does anybody wish to speak about this application? Here in the room, none, we'll go to the Zoom call, if you're on the Zoom call and you'd like to discuss or have any comments on Fort Heathcliff Drive, please use the raise hand feature at the bottom of your Zoom screen.
Chair Chong, there are no public comments.
Seeing none, the applicant does have five additional minutes if you'd like. All right, with that, we'll close it to the public and bring it back to the board, does anybody like to lead us off?
I can make the findings for the variants.
I agree.
Are we gonna do it that? I can make the findings too, but I also think it's an appropriate design and it's the site beautifully and it's a great site.
Yeah, no, I I agree, I went up there and you know, you can see kind of in it from the open space and I think it's a it's again, supportive of both the project and the variance. So with that, for a motion.
One more thing.
Yep.
It has some of the best serpentine examples I've seen in Tiburon, so if anybody likes serpentine the way I do. Walk down your driveway.
There it is. All right, so looking for a motion. And this, we have a draft resolution.
I moved to adopt the resolution and that is categorically exempt from CECL.
And we have a second.
Second.
All. We'll go with Jim's second, all those in favor?
I.
I.
Opposed, none, and with that, the application passes and we move to the last item on this evening's agenda, PH four, five thirty-four Silverado Drive, if the applicant could come forward, please.
Last but not least. Good evening, my, can I go ahead and start?
Okay.
Okay, so good evening, my name is Raul Savedra. I moved to Tiburon in two thousand eight, I'm married and have two children that both went through the Reed Union School District. My wife Jennifer and I are both actively act both actively involved in the community, we both served on the board of the Reed School Foundation. And I'm a member, I'm a board member and the vice president of the Tiburon Peninsula Club and a co-director of the Tiburon Challenger, which is a professional tennis tournament here held annually. We bought our house at five three four Silverado Drive in two thousand twelve and since then have thoughtfully redeveloped the property in phases while working with both the planning and building departments. Also, we have worked with our neighbors during this process and answered questions that have come through the planning department. We brought our architecture team with us this evening, we look forward to answering any questions, I want to thank you for your time this evening. So for the balance of our presentation, I'm gonna turn things over to our architect, Wright Sherman.
Thank you. Thank you, Raul. Good evening, everyone, thank you for staying in for the long haul. Wright Sherman, architect, together with my wife Emmy, is back there, we run a small firm called Studio Sherman. And I'm happy to present some some of the rationale behind our minor variance on the south side setback for five three four Silverado. See, do I advance, yeah? There we go. Just a little, a little bit of context. So the site, the house, as you, oops, let me. The house, as you see here, is highlighted on Silverado Drive and this is a site with a compound slope, so Silverado Drive like a a set of streets that that run parallel to Tiburon Boulevard, go up, run pretty much north, south. And then there's also a slope that runs east, west. And the house inhabits the west side slope of the peninsula that kind of looks out over Mount Tam and and also over the bay to the west. You can see here, there's a section that is cut right, right across here. And one particular condition of note is that Silverado Drive is significantly higher than the side of the site. You can see the main floor of the house is really kind of a one-story house on on the main level, as you see it from Silverado. And then a small space, the ADU that's tucked up underneath that opens to the lower yard. Oops, going the wrong way. A particular condition, one that because has has inspired us to think about like preserving the the main courtyard of the house and putting the addition, you know, close to the southern property lawn is that there's a shared access drive that runs across the front of the house. So in effect, the the front yard of this house is actually the courtyard. And so you can see here, the main existing house is in light blue. The location of the addition here to the south and we're positioning that addition right on top of an existing retaining wall that you'll you'll see in some photos is quite tall, that basically starts at about two or three feet tall here and grows along the slope to about seven or eight feet down here. This is a survey that kind of shows you the the contour lines, the slope of the street, the slope of the site, the existing house that wraps around a little courtyard, pantry courtyard. As we, as Raul noted, and the house has been lovingly curated over time. It's it's kind of gone from a little bit of a dreary house to something that is really quite lovely. This is the backyard, as you can see, kind of almost like a kind of an Antucket style, almost, you know, sort of colonial in its simplicity in a way. And the highlight feature of the of the house now on the front side is really this main entry portico that fronts on to the main courtyard, which which really is kind of the front yard of the house. These little images are views from the shared access drive and you can, it's hard to see here, but you can see the existing house to the left. This is the the sort of the starting point of that tall retaining wall, you'll see that in sections, so you can get a feel for how tall it is. Just a little bit about the organization of the house. So we've got two small bedrooms, basically all the common spaces, pantry, kitchen, dining, living, backyard, lower yard, front yard, courtyard, and then that that main entry portico. Some existing elevations of the house, in particular, this is that south side where you can see highlighted here the retaining wall where we're gonna propose to to place the addition. And then the addition itself. So a primary, the house currently does not have a a primary suite, bedroom suite. And so that's really the the main focus of this addition. On the main floor, we have, you know, the primary bedroom, the bathroom, closet spaces, and really what it does is it kind of creates the third side side of this entry courtyard. It also, I should point out too, there's an existing deck which is off of the living space and the deck which is off of the living space and this is essentially a shared now deck between the primary suite and the main living spaces. And the other part of this program is to create an internal stair that connects to the to the lower level. So the lower level, which is really tucked behind that existing retaining wall and completely underground is 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 just storage and a game room and an exercise room, and it's also connected to that new stair that that runs through the inside. Currently, the ADU is accessed from the outside. So with the proposed addition, you can see this would be the main front elevation as you approach the house. The existing entry portico is kind of the main, most welcoming feature. We have in the existing wing, bedroom wing to the north, and then we have the new primary suite to the south. And these these features are symmetrical and they, in a way, they complete the courtyard house. So in summary, a couple of renderings, this is that view from the shared access drive, looking at the new addition, the main courtyard, the entry portico just behind. And this is standing on the other, the other side looking south of that same space. There's the courtyard and and the addition. So our our findings are kind of paraphrasing what we've understood staff to believe as well, that we we you know, we don't believe that the that the addition impacts the neighborhood in any way. We think that it is complimentary of the house and it's really respectful of the neighborhood and the character of the house. And and there's many many examples of reduced setbacks in this part of the neighborhood and Tiburon in general where houses typically will will favor that 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 western view on the western side of the of the peninsula. So that's our proposal. We're happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of the applicant? Nope. All right. With that, we'll open it up to the public, assuming that no one's here that wants, but we'll go to the Zoom call to see if there's anybody on the bridge. Please use the raise hand feature, bottom of the Zoom screen.
Chair Chang, there are no hands raised.
All right, thank you. And you do have five more minutes. That you're all right. With that, we'll close the public portion of the meeting and bring it back to the board. For discussion.
Yeah, I I I really like this. This is a good little New England compact, but open plan. Courtyard works well and new addition works well. I can make the findings for the setback or lack thereof. But it's, I think it's appropriate. It doesn't seem to affect the neighborhood much. So I would approve it. All right.
I'm in the same boat. I think it's really, you know, good looking, smart, practical addition, really rounds out the the house and can also make the findings. Given the given the existing lot and for the setback variance, so very much in favor of it.
Yeah, I think I can make them findings for the variance. I did walk around a lot and I tried to find the impacts, but I didn't see much, so.
Yeah, I agree. It sits so far down kind of the hill from Silverado that I think the staff's comments around the special circumstance due to the slope of the lot, lot size, driveway easement, sensitivity of views of the neighbors and agreement that I can also make the four findings for the variance. So with that, it looks like we'd be looking for a motion.
You've done three, you might as well do four.
I mean, I mean, I would like to make a motion to adopt the resolution and that it's categorically exempt from CEQA.
And we have a second.
Second.
And all those in favor?
I.
I.
Opposed, none. And with that, the application passes. And we move to the last item on this evening's agenda, which is adjournment. Good night.
Good night, everyone.